Establish your presence before we have a roll call. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor here. First item on the agenda, proclamation. This is the fun thing we get to do, domestic violence awareness and prevention month. And we have got representative from Purple Door here. She's gonna come up. It's back on now. We're gonna recognize some of the lifeguards from our pool have been involved in life-saving incidents lately, and we're taking advantage of this time to do that. We have got awards for them, and the citations for what they did are gonna be read by some of our council people, and as they call your name and start reading, come up, because I've got your awards here.
First up will be Quentin Marr. On September 10th, 2022, lifeguard Quentin Marr was on duty guarding the splash pool. The pool at that time was occupied by three patrons. At 2:40 PM, a patron, nine years of age, in a wheelchair, was in the splash pool, and for some reason, the chair went forward, causing the patron to fall face down into the deep end of the splash pool. Recognized by the lifeguard, the patron was strapped into the chair and could not free himself. Upon noticing the child submerged headfirst in the water, lifeguard Quentin Marr immediately sounded the alarm, activating the emergency action plan to notify other guards. He entered the water to conduct a rescue by uprighting the patron. Lifeguard Marr performed primary health and welfare assessment of the patron to ensure the patron was stable and that he did not intake any water. Patron's parents were in the pool at the time of the incident and responded after they became aware of the rescue by lifeguard Marr. Once the patron was uprighted, examined, and found stable, he was released to his parents. The parents were very thankful for the actions of lifeguard Marr and his fellow guards. His alertness, quick thinking, and problem-solving resulted in a successful rescue that prevented a drowning incident. Congratulations. Kayden Dasher. On Saturday, September 17th, 2022, at approximately 6:30 PM, lifeguard Dasher was manning the lifeguard stand overseeing the competition pool while a birthday party was being held as a private event. Lifeguard Dasher, scanning and being alert and watching approximately thirty-five swimmers in the pool, observed a young girl coming off the diving board, struggling in the pool's deep end. Lifeguard Dasher quickly recognized that she was in danger and immediately activated the lifeguard emergency action plan, notifying the other guards that he was taking action. Lifeguard Dasher entered the pool, slammed to the girl, and applied a front act of rescue as he brought the girl to the poolside, where he and the other guard on duty began the care phase of emergency response after obtaining permission from the guardian. After being evaluated by the lifeguards, the young girl was found to be unhurt and only scared. Guards advised her and her guardian to sit by the pool and relax until she felt comfortable to continue to engage with the other children at the party in the shallow end of the pool. Lifeguard Dasher's quick response, recognition of the severity of the situation, immediate actions, and effective life-saving practices resulted in the potential saving of a life. Congratulations, lifeguard Dasher.
Kyle Bradshaw. On August 17th, 2022, lifeguard Kyle Bradshaw was on duty at the competition pool. Just one family of four was using the pool at the time. A peculiar chain of events happened. Lifeguard Bradshaw observed a twenty-one-year-old male staying near the wall of the pool. An eleven-year-old boy, they were later determined to be brothers, entered the pool from the diving board. The older brother attempted to reach the younger one, the younger who began struggling to swim. Both boys began to go underwater and resurface haphazardly. A young lady on the deck saw this and entered the water in an attempt to help the boys, later determined to be their sister. The young lady also began to struggle to remain at the surface. While all this unfolded in just seconds, lifeguard Bradshaw set off the emergency action plan and entered the water to conduct a rescue. He reached the young lady first and stabilized her, then gave her instructions and propelled her to the wall. Once she was near the wall, lifeguard Bradshaw conducted an active victim rescue of the younger boy and immediately secured the older brother. Lifeguard Bradshaw was able to get both victims together, using the rescue tube to guide them to safety. Once all three patrons were at the wall, lifeguard Bradshaw and the responding lifeguards helped them exit the pool. An assessment was conducted, and each person stated they were able to hold their breath and did not ingest any substantial amount of water. There was no other symptoms of illness or injury. Upon interview, the grandmother of the family stated that none of the three could swim very well, if at all. They were very thankful for the actions of lifeguard Bradshaw. His quick thinking and problem-solving resulted in a successful triple rescue that prevented a drowning incident.
I heard the signal.
All right. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience. For persons who have signed the speaker's card located in the table in the back of the training room, the service center, and delivered it to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Or written comments received by four o'clock on the day of council meeting. On any agenda item or any subject matter will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law will be called for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. We have one letter submitted for being read by Councilman Brundret.
This is from Christie Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive, Rockport, Texas. I would like for my Ward Three City Council Representative, Brad Brundret, to read my comments. I'm asking the city council to vote against agenda item number sixteen and start the process, application process over, to invite candidates for the charter review committee from the public. Updating the city charter is a very big deal. The nominees selected by the city council stack the deck in favor of investors in the private economic development corporation. Mark Waggon and Donna Townsend are EDC directors. Townsend is the chamber director. They represent business. Mike Miller is an investor in the EDC, and his company was awarded the construction contract for the city hall. Number one, all citizens should be invited to apply for the city charter review committee. But the committee application form currently on the city's website does not even have an option for charter review committee. Yet, the application forms included in the meeting agenda packet do. Why weren't charter review committee application forms made available to all qualified voters in the city of Rockport? It appears to be another backroom deal with the EDC running the affairs of the government and blocking out local residential taxpayers from having a voice in city government. Number two, Mark Waggon has only lived in the city of Rockport since September, but he has given an nomination to rewrite the city charter. Mark Waggon abruptly motions to change the building ordinances in Fulton to accommodate one developer and one development. Now we have zero problems development. Mark Waggon will not represent the best interest of citizens. Number three, part of the charter committee members must be qualified voters in the city. Mike Miller's application includes a business address of 404 South Austin. Is Mike Miller a resident and qualified voter in the city? If a city contractor was appointed to the charter review committee, this would be an egregious conflict of interest. City council must disqualify Waggon, Townsend, and Miller due to conflict of interest.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed or considered be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in normal sequence on the agenda. Do you have any desire to take anything off the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as intended.
Motion, I have a second. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion or debate? If not, call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Regular agenda, item number thirteen. Here deliberate an act to accept utility bill surcharge fund endorsement, dis- disbursement report. Annual reports from Fulton, Lamar, and Rockport Volunteer Fire Department and authorized disbursement, there's a word, of funds. Katie?
Good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight, we bring to you one of our favorite times when I'm not asking for money, but I'm letting y'all give it away. Tonight, all three of our local volunteer fire departments, Lamar, Fulton, and the Rockport Fire Departments are present. As you know, we have a item that goes out on our utility bills, where many of our residents contribute monthly to the utility surcharge fund, which is also known as the FIRE fund. We do collect this money throughout the fiscal year, and then at the end of our fiscal year, we tally it up and we issue three payments. For all those gas accounts out in Lamar, their surcharge goes directly to the Lamar Fire Department. For the residents that are located within Fulton, theirs goes to the Fulton Volunteer Fire Department, and the remaining goes to the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department. Each of the, there's representatives from each of these fire departments here tonight, and mayor, you have the checks for you to present to them. Y'all wanna hear the total, so you know what we were able to contribute? Okay. For Lamar, we're able to contribute to them $4,524.60. For Fulton, we're able to contribute $42,118.67. And for the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department, we are at $141,005.99. The requirements to spend this money is it must be spent on a capital purchase. And the ordinance is old, so this doesn't meet my capital purchase, but however, the ordinance states anything over $100 with a lifespan of two years or greater. So I believe they're here tonight, and the reports tell you what they spent theirs on. Lamar's was a little bit vague, but I did speak with, and he's here present tonight, Chief Stubbs from Lamar, and they actually spent theirs on the items that meet those requirements, such as bunker gear. So I'll let you have it from here, mayor.
Fulton Chief, come up this way. They handed me in a particular order to do these right now.
It goes without saying, everything's skyrocketed in price, and, uh, for, first of all, if you can even find something to buy, and then the prices they're wanting for it nowadays is astronomical. So anyway, we appreciate it very much. It'll go to good use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackie Mondi. I'm the assistant chief for the Fulton Volunteer Fire Department. And revenues for this year were gonna be spent on air pack bottles. That sounds like a minor, but those are $2,000 a bottle when you have to replace them ever so often. We've got about sixteen or seventeen that's gotta be replaced this year, $2,000 a bottle. And then we got bunker gear and everything else like everybody else. So, you know, costs have gone up just astronomically. So Fulton, we've sat back and we've kind of tightened our belt for this year, but we do appreciate this money, and it does come in handy with our capital expenditures. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Hello, Eric Rowe, Rockport Fire Chief. This is Assistant Chief Roy here.
Hi, Emily Gorera, I'm records keeper.
I hope you don't mind, we just set up a little presentation for y'all. So we are staffed with forty-four volunteers. Thirty of those volunteers are firefighters. Seven of those are lifetime members, and seven of those are fire court. Our vital services that we provide is fire protection. That is structured fires, wildland, and grass fires, and vehicle fires, search and rescue, fire education, and fire prevention. We provide services to 10,330 residents, 100,000 visitors, 7,165 residential dwellings, and that's within nineteen square miles, land mile, sorry.
I'm gonna kind of talk over what our 2021 statistics were as far as call volumes go. So just for Rockport Volunteer Fire Department alone, in 2021, we serviced 536 calls for the city limits of Rockport. We used 912 apparatus hours, 2,685 volunteer hours, 172,369 gallons of water, and then 154 gallons of foam to the city limits of Rockport. Within those 536, 216 within the city limits of Rockport, there was 42 residential structure fires, eight business or institutional fires, 15 vehicle fires, 73 brush tree grass fires, one marine fire, and 77 other. Fifty-four rescue calls, eight hazards, 61 controlled burns, 30 EMS assists, 149 fire alarms, three smell of or smoke scares, 14 and other assists, and one false call. Our totals for year-to-date from September 30th of last year to September 30th of this year, last year in 2021 in September, our year-to-date calls was 424 calls. This year for September 30th, we are sitting at exactly 417 calls, so we're only about five shy of what we were running this time last year.
All right, for the financials, the state of Rockport contributes $94,000 to our general fund, and our capital fund is about $135,000 for that. And we have our operating expense versus personnel costs. Plus capital expense equals our, the total value. All right, so our budget for operating last year was $424,142. With, if we had a pay department here in the city of Rockport, the citizens would pay $2,380,000 for, that's just personnel and for insurance. That's not including any equipment, plus $3,316,500. That's just depreciation on our trucks. So the grand total of it is $6,120,642, what the city would be paying annually. And that's a savings of $854 per resident for us being a volunteer fire department. And our capital purchases this year with this money, hopefully we'll be spending on a new light attack truck. So we got a grant from the Porcy Service, which will cover about $120,000. So about this $141,000 will probably cover the rest of it. Any other questions?
Chief, I'd like to say something to y'all. It's amazing, council.
It's an amazing council meeting when we get to talk to a lot of lifesavers. It's also an amazing thing when you see somebody that's an old retired cop talking good about the firemen because you could have talked about that just enough time. But I appreciate all your departments. Y'all have done a tremendous job. I've been around some other volunteer departments that were not that dependable, but y'all have always done a great job. I admire firemen and like that, including our councilman Brad Runge. Brad is also a fireman, but thank you for everything you do. We couldn't get by without you. God bless all of you. Thank you a lot. And I forgot Mike, who was a fire chief for a hundred and fourteen years in February. Thank you, Chief.
Katie, before we move on to number thirteen, I think when we talked in our electric workshop, we were, I think we were in the workshop, we had discussed possibly raising the utility funds or something we could do to bring in some more money for the departments on the water bills or something. Have we, have we got to look at that fee structure at all yet?
We have looked at the fee structure. It's, it hasn't been changed, and I believe it was, my gosh, I totally went blank. It's been over ten years, I guarantee you that, since it has been changed. It started out in the mid-nineties, and then it's increased, but it's been like about twelve years since the last increase. I can bring that back to you all as a discussion item and let you look at the opportunities to increase that slightly. Definitely with the current challenges with the cost of everything, it would benefit all of our local fire departments.
I mean, I don't, they didn't, I didn't see their fuel cost in their, in the presentations, but I know that's, that's got to be eaten. Everything is getting more expensive. Their, their equipment, their capital costs are going to be pretty expensive if they can find anything.
Did they step out on me?
I think they all stepped out. But.
I paid it this much.
Oh, yeah. Gotcha. That's all.
Yeah, I believe their fuel to date, as of the end of September, they've already spent over thirteen thousand on fuel. They're averaging about fifteen hundred a month on fuel, and that's if, at the current rate, so just kind of give you guys an idea of that. And some of their equipment is a little bit aged, so some of it's starting to get expensive to keep it on the road. Now that they just got a grant that they were sharing with you, the grant was for a hundred and twenty thousand. We can definitely do that.
Next item on the agenda, number fourteen, deliberate an act on first reading and ordinance granting conditional use permit to allow the use of manufactured home, the property zone R1, first single-family dwelling district located one fifty-seven Klugee Trail, also known as McComb subdivision, part of lots fifty-five and fifty-six, being three point four nine four acres, city of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, subject to compliance with conditions stated within this ordinance, as well as those stipulated in the city of Rockport code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for separability, and providing effective date. Deidre?
Mayor. Mayor, I'm going to talk to this. In fact, the owner of the property just walked in. He was rushing to get here from work. Sir, if you'd like to go ahead and come to the podium, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I had your back covered, though. Unique situation, Mayor and Council. If you recall, we had a misstep on a joint public hearing where we didn't have a quorum, so we conducted two separate public hearings, which we're going to talk about in just a little bit. But this item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission last Monday, and the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending that we grant a conditional use permit with some stipulations, but I would like for the owner to speak on his own behalf and tell you the situation out of his property.
Sure, thanks for the opportunity to speak. We had a truck to fire, it was the fourth of February, and we moved the trailer on there just to see maybe it was, unfortunately, our mistake, I guess, the zone, we could put one on because all the surrounding areas are trailers on them as well. So we ran into the problem of getting electricity there. That's what I learned about the conditional use power, and was informed that we can put the trailer on there for a period of time and then have a stipulation for a year or two to start structure, to building the other structure. That's the plan, is to build the original structure back while we're living in the mobile home on the property. So I presented to council a couple of times, and this gentleman over here was supportive and made some good recommendations, and that's what I'm here tonight, is just asking for the conditional use of power so I can start putting the, start with the building. But initially, the trailer needs to be fixed up. It was a bit of a trade wreck when we got it, but those are circumstances that are critical.
All right. And P and Z recommended, then, with what stipulations we talked about?
The P and Z is recommending that we grant a conditional use permit, that we, we have a review at one year to see the progress that is made on the property. The gentleman explained to the Planning and Zoning Commission that he is in the process of actually upgrading and reworking the mobile unit or the manufactured home that is being put on the property. He's doing the work himself, and within one year, we need to see progress on a structure being built on the property. And this is a conditional use permit for temporary placement of a manufactured home on this property. We also advised the property owner that at any time during this process, if he wanted to come in and request a rezone to allow for a manufactured home on that piece of property based upon what's surrounding him, as Klugee Trail was just recently, I say recently, it was the last annexation into the city of Rockport. So the surrounding area does have some manufactured homes on it, and if he chose at the time, depending on where he's at financially and his ability to move forward with his project to construct a home on the property, if at any time he wanted to come in and seek a rezone, he has up to a year to have a manufactured home on the property with a conditional use permit. At the end of the year, we will go out and we will inspect the property to determine what progress, if any, has been made, and then possibly come back to you with a recommendation to revoke the conditional use permit if no, if no significant progress has been made.
Be for one year.
Or an extension if there's progress.
And sir, could I add to that, to expand on those comments? I did approach the neighbors, and I have written consent from the neighbors, saying that they are fully in agreement with both the power to the home and also potentially the rezoning of to have a mobile home onto that property. Both neighbors have no issue with it whatsoever. And further to your point, the photographer did not come out, but I took some pictures, and I can email them to use, though of course they're all timestamp, so you can have a timestamp their own.
Yes, sir. I believe our inspector has been out to the property, but that, that's fine. If you would email those pictures, that would be wonderful.
He didn't make himself known to me unless I wasn't there.
Okay. Yes, sir. But yeah, and again, tonight is for the granting of a conditional use permit with the stipulations that at one year, we will go out and inspect the property to determine progress.
And I'm understanding there was no, no, no citizens that came against it, right? I make a motion to approve item number fourteen, to grant a conditional use permit with the stipulations of to put in review in one year.
Have motion and second, further discussion. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Three, aye. Four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, y'all. Thanks so much. Sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Item number fifteen, here deliberate an act on process for conducting public hearings as per section one eighteen dash twenty-six of Rockport code of ordinances.
Good evening, Carrie Dietrich, community planner, city of Rockport. And as you know, we had a bit of a problem having a joint public hearing and getting a quorum, but the single public hearings doesn't seem to be a problem. So, and that cuts back on, on the time that it takes to get a rezone or a cuff or whatever the public hearing is for. And in our ordinance, section eighteen dash twenty-six states that the commission and council shall hold a public hearing either jointly or separately. So the joint public hearing isn't required by ordinance, so we would like for you to approve us doing this separate. So what would happen is they, the application would come in, and it would be a P and Z public hearing with an action item for a recommendation. The first council meeting would be the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance, and the second council meeting would be the second reading of the ordinance. Now, when we have things like rezones and things, the P and Z will get their packet the week before, so they have time to review. If we're going to do a big ordinance change, then we would do a workshop first with P and Z and council, so there'd be time to review all that and not just throw it on them the Friday before the meeting. And if this doesn't work, we can always go back to the joint public hearing, but we'd, we'd like for you to approve the single public hearing.
Can I ask, what, what is, I've seen an issue with the quorum, of them not being able to make, what is going to make that easier for them? I, I just trying to.
It's, I'm not certain, but it's all the, all the meetings in a month, and it's, we had, I think the last one, someone was out of town that we didn't expect to be, and got caught up in a different organization. But I've got their calendars now, and we'll, we'll just have to plan around them. I honestly don't know.
I was having a concern with how many times the quorum was not being made, and just accountability for, have to make it to those meetings. So if this is going to help change that, so we can make sure that we get these things pushed.
I believe it will.
This reduces the meetings. They have the regular meetings and have to make, now they just have to make their regular meetings, you have to make regular meetings.
Well, about two weeks, really, two to three weeks.
I'm good with that.
And P and Z said that they will, a representative will come to the council meetings in case you have questions about their recommendation.
Both y'all answered some of the questions I had, just, I think it's good for the public. It shortens the time, timeframe, they're not stuck in the government limbo for six weeks, eight weeks to try to do this, but it does shorten that, so it's good for the public. And then I'd like to say if it's a big ordinance change or something, big change, we can do a workshop. That's what I was worried about is, is something that is larger, you know, a large development or ordinance change or something like that, that we would be acting too fast and we might, we might miss something.
Right.
And that's what I was concerned about, but if we, you know, P and Z gets it done, and then council gets done, or if we do a workshop, I think that'll, that'd be, that'd be good for us.
Okay.
Further question?
Yes, so when we publish the public hearing notice, both meetings would be on the one notice, the P and Z on this date and time, and the council on this date and time. Mayor and City Council, I have been given the privilege of presenting this item to you, and I will be handling the charter review process. As stated in the agenda packet, section twelve point fifteen of the city charter explains the charter review commission and entails, it's basically very brief of what they will be charged with reviewing the charter. This commission only reviews the charter. They do not make any changes. They go through the charter section by section by section. We will have an attorney which is specializing in this type of thing. That is also included the resolution, and their name, the attorney firm is Messer Fort and McDonnell. They will be assisting us and be attending the meetings of the charter review commission to make sure everything that they suggest is legal. And according to state law, we have to follow Title Nine or Section Nine of the Texas Local Government Code when it comes to charter review and charters. So we will be combing through things with a fine tooth comb. The suggestions they make will all be combined into a document then after various multiple meetings, and when we brought to council for approval to put on a ballot. The attorney already has posted some suggestions for dates. We're looking at beginning meeting immediately, the first week in November. And as soon as I have the names of the committee, commission members that are appointed, I will be polling them to make sure this is convenient, and they're all eligible to attend, and we don't have any issues, and we're going to work with them so we get everybody on board and start on it immediately. The attorney also has proposed an agenda for the first meeting already. These meetings are open to the public. They will be posted on the website and according to Open Meetings Rack, just like any other meeting, just like the council does. They are open to the public. There will, once the commission has basically put their stuff together and made their suggestions or recommendations, there will be a public hearing open to the public for them to comment and for you to hear those, so that the public is invited to be involved. It's just that these commission members are charged with being very careful in reviewing everything, and then making a formal document to present to council. We are looking at calling a special election. Our goal is to call a special election in conjunction with the May general election. And in order to make that happen, we have to have everything presented to council and so that we could call the election at the last meeting in January. We do have the flexibility of waiting till the first meeting in February, but the council has always made it a precedent to call an election at the last meeting in January's because if there are some issues, our concerns, we have two weeks to fall back on. So that is the plan. I'm trying to think if I've covered everything. There were five, each council member submitted a nominee or a suggestion for the commission member. Councilmember Jackson had submitted a name. That was included in the agenda packet. I'm doing some research. That particular person is not a registered voter at this time within the city of Rockport, so Councilmember Jackson has submitted a new nominee, and that application was emailed you this afternoon and is in front of you tonight. Let me think if I missed anything. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, please? What we're asked to do is pass a resolution establishing charter review committee, and then you'll go out and take care of it.
Right, yeah. That's what, requesting that you adopt the resolution, appointing the members, and please state those members' names when you make the motion and charting, like, just like the title says, charting the commission, and.
It's just like a regular resume, you need to read each member's name.
And engaging the professional firm to do that. That's, that's all in the resolution, so.
I see here, our last charter review was in two thousand and eight, so we're, we're a little bit behind on doing our reviews. So thank you all for putting this together for us. And then will you just also please reiterate the charge of the, just want to make sure that it's, it's, it's heard that the, the charge of the commission is not to change the charter or anything like that. They're here to review the charter and make some. They're here to review the charter and make suggestions to council and then it goes to the ballot. So if we could just reiterate that.
They are charged with reviewing the charter and making suggestions. And it has legal oversight, the committee does, so. They're not going willy nilly, they're going to have legal oversight, everything's going to be, sorry to just pick.
No, no, please.
Everything's going to be reviewed thoroughly, comes to you, and you call the election. And then it goes to the voter. The charter committee is not being told at all. There's several steps in between, and then it ultimately is approved or disapproved by a voter. It is a voter, there's no other way to change a charter.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Chris, I know you stated it, the name of the attorney, but just to clarify, there was a, there was concern raised by a constituent. This is not our normal firm that normally represents the council. This is a firm that was selected specific for this activity and has experience in this area. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, yes, ma'am, council member.
It's Master Fort McDonald, you can look, look them up. Like twenty-four, thirty-five attorney, something like that.
Right, yeah. And they've, and they've already been very proactive in assisting me. So I think this is going to go real smooth.
I have a process question. You know, the commission does their thing, gives it to us. We have a public hearing, and then is there a wait before we vote to put it on the ballot or?
Can I back your process up a little bit? The commission is required to have one public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Section four of the, of the resolution.
Right.
So they will have one public hearing. If you want us to back it up, we can have a public hearing and then, and then you can vote to put it on the ballot the next meeting, if you want, like a two week. The ultimate thing is you can have as many public hearings as you want. We are under a deadline with calling the election, so.
I thought I had heard two public hearings, but it's only one.
Well, the commission will have one.
Right.
And then the council will have a public meeting that requires, that election. That's all that's required, but you can have public hearings as many as you want. We provide that.
It may be a better idea to just have it as a, a special meeting with one agenda item by just having it a regular council meeting, just so that.
There's plenty of time.
There's plenty of time, it's the only thing on the agenda, and we can concentrate just on that, not everything else.
And it might be good for you to meet with the commission, the joint meeting, and then you guys can, can back and forth and make sure you're on the same page. We can make that happen, let us put together a little draft. You know, the citizen input's going to be incredibly important in this. And so, so let us put together a little draft and see how we can kind of maximize that and stay within the timeframe. And, and we'll get you something, we'll get you something good.
The attorney and I are, we just haven't gotten that far yet, we'll be working on the timeline.
The, the meetings will be open meetings to the public, the commission meetings, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
And will they be the same three minutes to speak or will it be a, will be like a, not necessarily workshop, but how would, can the citizens provide an input or discussion to?
The commission.
The commission.
The commission will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, they need to do that upfront, so the rules are known, but.
Because.
But that, that is their prerogative.
Right, yeah, and it, because it will be very important, because this is quite a task, that they move things along and don't get bogged down with a certain thing. And that, that's the major purpose of an attorney being present, so that he can say, oh, no, 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 that's not allowed by law anyway. So we can move things along.
And we will have, or they will have representation present during, during their meeting?
Yep.
Awesome, okay.
In person?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything further? What we're being asked to do is by resolution establish this committee and call their names at this time. Committee will be composed of ward one, George Doug Webb, ward two, Deidra Ayer, ward three, T Mark Wagner, and ward four, Donna Townsend, and at large, Thomas J Blazek. I need a motion. Motion and second, any further discussion or debate? Call for a vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Reports from council, ward one, got the thing.
Most exciting thing happened, worthless. All of the history that says the property that left on Fox Street finally picked up on the day of the law. Twenty years, but we finally got it.
Ward two.
Thank you, we've had a little time since the last time we met due to the T M L annual conference. That was my first annual conference for T M L and really not only enjoyed it, but really was pleased with the caliber of the, the presentations and the information that was shared there. Other than that, we did have a stormwater floodplain management advisory committee on October third. I did attend as the alternate and don't want to steal on your thunder mayor as the, the, the primary representative, but we did have a presentation from the American Flood Coalition. We got an update on the proposed toolie watershed plan. And I believe the action was that the county's going to submit a grant to be able to do that plan and then received an update on county drainage project. Also, yesterday, we had a Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board and received a very thorough report from staff on past and future park events, as well as status of different park projects. One of the items that was brought forward that we'll need to make sure staff continues to discuss is this status of the shade structure for the basketball courts that had been pulled from an agenda item a while back. And we'd like to see that brought back again at some point with the, with the, I guess, updated and refreshed quotes or whatever we need to do on that. But other than that, that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ward three, also got to attend T M L for the city of Rockport. It was great to get out there and make some contacts with, with other cities. Hear some things, some of the same issues that everyone is dealing with, you know, just increased cost of, of everything, budgets and whatnot, and then also meet some contacts from vendors, different vendors for the city and then try to bring some information back to, to the city to help us make some decisions moving forward. Was able to meet George and some of the parks guys out at Ben Oaks. We're going to the Parks Department's building some fences, get some new fences out there at Ben Oaks. And also hope to get some trees planted out there as well to, to help add some more trees out there at Ben Oaks. And what, when is the, the tree giveaway? Tomorrow, okay, what time? Plant, they're planting twenty-five trees at Ben Oaks tomorrow, and then the tree giveaway was last week, yeah, that's right, sorry. It was out of town anyway, but anyway, so, so twenty-five trees tomorrow at Ben Oaks. So good things going on down there at that, at that park. So thanks to Parks Department, and that's all I have.
Ward one. Ward. We're trying to give her back four of your time.
Yes, um, a couple of things, we, y'all, I think, attended T M L, Katie, we missed her. It was a, you know, very informational thing, so on top of that, I guess, remember. I'm on, I'm the, I'm the liaison for the Rockport Chamber. We did hire a new CEO, Shelley Stewart, so she should be starting on November fifth. She used to work for the chamber many, many years, so I think she's going to be a good fit. So that's something to look forward to. Um, gosh, I'm trying to remember everything I was going to say now. Fall Festival this Saturday, which, last Saturday, no, we have another Fulton. Okay.
Success.
Fall Festival is a huge success. Okay, so. Oh, I heard, okay, that was that one. And not, but we had a drainage meeting for the Rockport Country Club last week on Wednesday when we got to discuss just various things that were going on and issues that people were having. And I know that Mike had his meeting on Friday for the primary start of the drainage pipe in the Rockport Country Club. Hopefully that went well. And then on top of that, I'm on the Education Foundation, we have Paint the Town Red on November fifth, so please get your tickets, and this is their big fundraiser, and all that money goes to grants to support our teachers and our students. So please just take a look at that and see what you can do to donate. And I think that's about it, now that my mind has been puzzled up.
Couple of occasions over the last about month and a half to attend meetings of the Mission Aransas National Estuary and Research Reserve and look at some of the things they're doing. One of the campuses at the University of Texas Marine Science Institute in Port Aransas, they have some new facilities there that are really, really great. If you have kids that want to look at marine life and things like that, that inhabit our area and the water creatures that we have around here, they have a great venue for that. You can take them in, you need to call them ahead of time, make sure they don't have something special going on. As you go over and they have very interesting things for the kids. They can see all sorts of fish and seahorses and, and all sorts of things. They even have one exhibit that lets little ones, not my size, but get down their heads and knees and crawl up in a tunnel and they stand up and they're in the waters all around them. So they're looking at the fish and, and kids love it. So that one was really nice. The one over at the Wildlife Refuge has got some great new facilities too, and they have education things that are great for young people and adults too. And they expect when the winter Texans show up here, that they will have a lot of those folks over there. It'll make them a lot busier than they sometimes are. But it's really great, if you get a chance, go over there and look at those things and they would love to see you because it lets them at least know that people are interested in what they're doing and that they know, we know what they're trying to accomplish for us. And I have nothing else, we are going into executive session, all executive, yes, ma'am. That's okay.
I forgot, it was in the paper today, thank you very much, Mike. And there's flyers all over Facebook right now, there's going to be a, an outfit called the Vet Center at the new post home for the V F W at nine one six South Bronte Street. These guys work with the VA, but they specialize in all benefits and figuring out who qualifies for which one. There are many veterans who are not using all of their, their benefits. So it's from twelve to eight at our new post home, and we're having a burger burn from five to eight. Right. Thank you, that's it.
Forget that other thing I said. Do I have a second? Where's Jared?